Yeah, if it's a street that is one of your main streets like that, it's going to be citywide benefit that everybody's using to get in and out of the city. Yeah. We also have an issue going on with the environmental review for the next round of demolition projects. The redevelopment authority worked with the city to choose some projects for demolition with the 2012 funding. Two of those were the Wolverton Street project at 1126, 1128 Wolverton. It was determined that that's in a historic district called the Tuscon Hannah Mills Historic District. We sent a whole group of photos of the area to Pam Riley at the State and Storage Preservation Office. She's reviewed them. She thought that the information we sent was very helpful. I think what we're going to have to do there, the easiest way to deal with that one will be to put a letter together that basically says, "The city already has an excess of housing stock and the cost to rehab this property would far exceed the fair market value of the property."
Do we have any documentation to support that?
The redevelopment authority did have somebody look at it for rehab.
Who did say?
I don't recall. I don't really process all that.
So they can see something's right in saying that, but we're not doing that.
Yes, yes. I need to get with the redevelopment authority. That was my next point, to get with the redevelopment authority to get that information. We'll get a letter put together to Pam Riley as well to get that taken care of. I think that one will be taken care of next week. There won't be any issue there. The one she's struggling more with is the Wise Warehouse demolition, being that it's the first Wise store. She's all gung ho about it being an historic property.
I don't think it's historic.
Yeah, that's my impression that it's-
No, the first store was a warehouse.
Just a warehouse, so.
It was a plastic.
She was worried that it's an historic landmark, so.
Can ease her fears. We already poured down the original one, so.
Terry in our office, who deals with these, who deals with the environmental reviews, has a lot of notes on it. She's been talking to Pam about what her concerns are. I can tell Terry that it was never a store. It was essentially a warehouse and that's all that we've been looking for.
It's been a carpenter shop for 50 years.
Oh, it's been a carpenter shop?
For years. What, do you think 20 years?
Well, this is-
More than that?
I'll tell you what, we could offer it as her personal office for one month and then she would decide.
Right, well, she's offered to come up for a visit. However, that would delay things for like a month or more. I don't want to do that. She wants to come anyway. But I will let Terry know tomorrow that it is just been a warehouse and that it wasn't any historic significance to Wise, but I'm not sure what else she's going to be looking for there.
Does she want more pictures, better pictures?
I don't think so. I think she has the pictures that she needs. She did say that if you just demolish it with local funds, you no longer worry, so. If you should so choose, you could just knock it down with city funds and not worry about the CDVG funds in it and then nobody could tell you different. But I will go back tomorrow and let her know, you know, that it was never a historic store or anything like that and see what else actually that she needs and let you know if it's anything else I need. I don't want to hold up the environmental review and everything else for too long, so if there's something more that she needs, we may just remove that one, move on with the others, and then head back to that one.
Okay.
That's what we have going on with CDVG funds. As soon as we get a response from Beverly Hutzle about if she is able and willing to meet with us about economic development and about the ambulance service projects, I'll let you know, or she may get back to you directly, didn't because it went for me. Let me know what she does and then we can move forward. She's in the meantime to move forward, you know, if you want to fund the other projects instead and say, "I'm not. We're done waiting for DCED. Let me know. We can do that." I do want to get the streets funded as soon as possible, so as soon as we have the streets list and we can get some fundability determined, we'll schedule a public hearing to allocate the funds to that project. It may be the next meeting. I think we have something on the schedule for next meeting that was supposed to be a CDVG 2013 thing, but that's postponed because the 2013 is currently postponed. But the one that is most costly or is most timely is the street reconstruction project. We need to get the money into that.
Professor, remember, what'd you say about the sidewalk with current funding, $50,000?
That's 2012.
Is it 2010? Can it be used anywhere?
That can be used anywhere.
That's where we're doing a survey though, North Third Street.
Right now, we are doing a survey of North Third Street, but qualifies. But it can be used anywhere and you can put 2013 money into it to do, you know, other areas next time. There'll be money left. It won't take all of that, I don't think, to do North Third Street if it qualifies. But we do need to get some of this 2011 money spent, especially because of time and this issue on our contract. And if we can get the streets qualified and get the money moved, we can spend it there, so that's not an issue. And we can always look 2013 money into economic development to replace what we're taking out because it needs to be spent.
Would it be beneficial for me to maybe send a letter to those people on Third Street and explain what we're trying to do so that, you know, I understand we're trying to get new sidewalks and curbs up through there and they need that financial information?
We could push cards for the ones that we couldn't.
Oh, yeah.
Push cards in the door to someone to qualify.
Okay.
We'll get that a little bit and if that doesn't work, then we'll talk about it. Because I do have a form letter that generally goes out. If they won't respond to the door, I can send out a letter with the survey that tells them exactly how to complete it and why they need it. And we can put postage paid envelopes in there and they can just send it out to me. So if they don't respond, it's postcard. We'll take the next step.
Too many, how many cars are on that street though? When Tranger, Packer Street, everybody was down.
Oh, yeah? Don't tell anybody that. Sidewalks are the people that are there. So that's all that I have. So right now, I just need the list of streets and that information and then we'll keep going there. Everything else is not so timely as that street stuff.
And I'm assuming she'll let us know one way or the other in a couple of weeks if she's coming or not coming.
If she doesn't get back to us in the next week, just call her. Probably next week I'll call her if I don't hear from her this week and follow up with her.
And I do think eventually we're going to sit down and make a decision.
Oh, yeah, we're going to have to. I mean, this money has to, you're supposed to spend your CDVG funds from three years of the contract date on your activities. Now, 2011, we've already lost over a year waiting for Hutz's decision on these facade. So we could get more time if we needed it to spend money in addition to those three years. They always give you an extension up to the five-year term of the contract, but that's really not the point. I mean, we have to find something to do with the funds. They don't last forever. And as long as it takes to get a project underway and moving and done, we need to pick something.
We'll have something for you there, too.
Okay.
I promise you that.
Wonderful.
All right, thank you, Jamie.
You're welcome.
Anybody here of SRI update? Yes, ma'am.
This month, we've been continuing the membership tribe and have added probably about 20% more members than we had last month, so we're definitely making our way through, but we're still continuing. If anybody knows anyone who'd like to become a member, please let us know. Spark is currently in the process of applying for monies through DCED and NAP programs for a project focusing on rebuilding a property in town. Hometown Veterans banners. We currently have 42 new banner applications turned in and paid for. Last year, we had 77 total, but we also have some people who are renewing their banners from last year. So anyone who had a banner last year is welcome to come in, pay $100 to rehang the banners from last year or $200 for a new banner. And the deadline on that is March 20th.
20?
27th, 27th. So it's not this Friday, but next Friday. And I have to say that thank you to Sunbury Broadcasting, Daily Item and News Item have really helped push that out there into the news. People are aware of it now. Tbiz is currently in the process of getting five students from Shiklamie High School in order to participate. We have met with the FBLA, the person in charge of the FBLA and the vice principal of the school. And so we do have some major interests there, but it's just meeting the students and getting them involved. Elm Street Hill Neighborhood, they are currently working on a grant receipt funding for rain barrels. It's for pollution prevention, a reduction program, and also reducing rainwater drainage. So we are waiting, we'll be waiting to hear for that. We won't hear about a response on that until July. I also have a list of meetings. If anyone's interested in attending anything, please let me know. I can give you that list. Any questions, Paul?
How does the application that you're filing for benefits through Spark dovetail with what Jamie does at CEDOC or benefits that might be out there? I mean, is this a program the city could apply for, for example, or do we have to sign off on your application?
Yes, it's actually a tax credit program. And so it's definitely the more partners, the better. What we have to do though is choose a property, come up with, it's very similar process to applying for a grant, except that the primary funding comes from private businesses. And then that money from the private businesses, they will receive, they pay us directly and then receive a tax credit back, but it's only after the project is approved.
Who's taxes?
The businesses' taxes. So they would pay us, they would make commitment of five or six years at $50,000 a year and then they would receive 75 to 80% of that back at their year in taxes.
Would the city still get its tax money?
Yes, yes, this is, sorry, this is a, no, I believe this is a state program. So they have to have at least 50, they have to be large enough to have at least $50,000 in taxes per year on average. Although they can delay that out, of course, you know, they can use those tax credits over a longer period of time. However, it's that's sort of the generic guideline. So it's much, it's very large businesses that we're talking with to try and get by in the project.
Questions? Thank you. Redevelopment Authority update, I believe, last week and I guess maybe a few things that we have to address and solutions.
I do. Just what I described as housekeeping things. We have a list of several nuisance properties that we're adding to our list so that we can move along to the next list where we do acquisition through the court system. Are we off? The addresses to you, the first is 312 South Front Street, 964 South Front Street, 128 Augusta Street, 737-739 Market Street. And these are properties that if you go on tour, we have Mike Rose here to describe them if you have any questions, but they're in pretty bad shape, so they just got added to the list. The notice that we put up, and Mike helps us to post them, is that the property owners can take a look at their properties and within 10 days, they can fix up the properties. And if they'll fix up the properties, then we can take it to the next step where we move towards eminent domain to remove light.
Question?
Are we still going to just, even though we're not, we have like a backlog of 25 houses now, and what point do we?
Put them on the list.
Add the list and it could be 150 houses. If we still have a backlog, we're just going to keep on adding homes to the list?
Well, what happens is people, actually when this happens, actually people from out of the woodwork can actually take some of them off the list and do stuff with them. So hopefully the list moves far faster than I could do last year.
So for example, and it's helpful for the audience to understand, we had a high water mark of about 58 at one point and then it's come down to approximately 25 at this point. So it goes up and down. It helps people.
All right. I'm making a motion. Will you take a second?
Excuse me. A nuisance property, okay? I'm serious. The building is a death trap. I worked there. I was in four breathing treatments a day. I was in inhalers. I was in shots. I was in all kinds of prednisone pills. I moved, we moved out of the building, I'm down to one pill. People had lung infections, sinus infections, they had mold growing in the basement, they had air conditioning down through the walls. It's very dangerous. I just hate to see another person in there, so it's just my info.
Okay, no problem. Let's get to the code.
I like tore down.
I start from Snyder.
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Truitt?
Yes.
Artella?
Yes. Just give us your name. We'll get that in minutes and we'll have the code, we'll look into that address.
Okay, RiReel, R-I-E-H-L.
And you're talking about the building at Fourth and Market?
The building, human service building, yes. It should be tore down and why don't you build a new school, get something safe in there. It has, they pumped water out there, I think, for two weeks. It went by one day and they had someone open three inches of water and account set down there for years before they moved in. There's a lot of mold growing off the walls in the basement and they weren't there. A lot of sickness there. I share that.
Any else in the development department, Mike? Nope, just go to the senior. Can we finish business? New business. How about the resolution for the sale of guns?
I have a resolution that I was asked to prepare, which I would describe as a state bookkeeping issue again. This handles a transaction which was negotiated between two police departments, between the City of Sunbury Police Department and the Shamokan Dam Police Department for the routine sale of two shotguns. The price for the weapons is $300. This is what has been done over the years between municipalities and this formalizes the process for city council. I have a copy for everyone that I'll pass out for the resolution. So that the public understands and also this resolution would be available for the public to review. Third-class city code under section 36919 permits sale of personal property between municipalities. I explained in this resolution that this action does promote the public policy advantage of allowing weapons to be transferred from police department to police department to improve public safety. And finally, that in the future, the chief of police, although the chief felt that he had done all the paperwork just right by working with the alcohol, tobacco and firearms regulations, then also the third-class city code regulations have to be followed too and the chief would just let us know before doing these types of negotiation and discussion in the future, which I know the chief's not a yes and we look forward to doing that.
Yes, sir.
So that's the resolution, but if anybody has any questions, I'd be pleased to answer.
I'm going to question, are you thinking in the future anything being sold at city property should come through council?
Absolutely, and that's what the rules say, Joe. And we actually have an entire inventory now down in the office. You know exactly what that is. And so, yeah, this just makes it official what was done in the past and the chief realizes what happened. And I'm not blaming anything, just that past practice in the city, stuff like this has happened in the past, so as of now, we're going to make sure that it doesn't happen anymore and it will be documented correctly.
Excuse me, wasn't that brought up at the council meeting one night? I remember that being brought up.
No, it wasn't.
Are you sure?
I think, I think we had something brought up about handguns at my time.
Yeah, and there's handguns, that's in a future thing, but this is, this was, this happened-
Last year.
Yeah, last year or before.
Guns.
Okay, I'll make, I'll make a motion to accept the resolution. I need a second.
If anyone's prepared.
Go ahead, Joe. Give it to Joe, he prefers.
Snyder?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Truitt?
Yes.
Artella?
Yes.
Ister?
No.
Pay vouchers, Todd?
Yes, the liquid fuels voucher report, as well as our standard payable reports would have been sent out, everyone by email. Looking to get approval this evening to make payable in the liquid fuels account, $6,127.19 worth of outstanding bills. And then in our standard general fund, make payment of $25,692.19 worth of outstanding bills. Is that a form of motion?
All right. Thank you.
Christine?
Yes.
Truitt?
Yes.
Artella?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Back to his honoration, Todd.
Yes, everyone's forward this evening and then you'll have the standard report outlining requests for exoneration of taxes. You might make a motion to accept the request as noted and the amount shown.
Truitt?
Yes.
Artella?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes. We're getting near them, but I just want to announce now that as soon as this is over, if you guys just hang around for a little bit, be down at the office, just have an executive session, talk about the police contract a little bit. Audience comment? Any things specific? Yes, sir?
Yes.
Just please identify yourself for the recording.
My name is Drake Saxton. I'm a property owner and just outside. I'm very actual. I have a question as to, well, actually, three questions. One is, can you comment on the, how far the new city plan has advanced, what you next have planned to continue to implement that plan? And I have two other issues. One being the lack of code enforcement in the city, particularly regarding the Moran site, and whether you're going to be updating the code as suggested in this plan?
Well, let me adjust the first question since that's the plan. So with the plan, everybody has access to a copy of the plan, so every department's going to use what's in that plan or should use that for their direction. The only thing I'm involved with the plan right now is the redevelopment authority and the redevelopment authority is going with that and talk about neighborhoods. We talked in the past about maybe construction, whole rebuilding new neighborhoods, addressing the light, which is addressed in that plan. So there's 100 things in that plan. You'd have to ask everybody here, specifically their departments, if there's any part of that plan that they're using. That's what it's for. That's exactly what it's for. Personally, it's just right, to me, it's the redevelopment authority, what they're doing in their quest as far as that is. Do you guys want to answer anything add to that? Okay.
Well, it appears to be a wide variance from the plan and what's happening on that site right now. There have been numerous code violations, things that have not been enforced. And I have a long list. I've given them to you, Mayor Persie, you've seen them.
And I've given them to the code office again. Yes.
Yes, and I think it would behoove the city to begin to enforce the code that they've enacted. Obviously, you've enacted those codes in order to advance the city's cause and to protect the citizenry of the city. So those things need to happen and I guess I'm asking, is it going to happen and when?
Will you get your request to us in writing? We'll get to the code office and like I think in the past, these people have answered your questions and we'll answer whatever new ones you have.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Did you say you do it with a list?
He met, I met with him one time. He gave me a list and I forwarded it to your office.
Okay. You got it from Mike?
Yep.
You got the list or you don't know about the list? But Joe have it?
Well, I have no idea.
So why don't you like to get that list to get to Joe Bartella?
I will get it to Mr. Bartella.
Get Mr. Bartella, who's in Troy's Department and let him handle it, please.
That was what, three months ago we met? Three weeks, maybe?
Thank you, Mr. Sack.
Any other questions? Yes, ma'am.
Yes, Cora Campbell. I would like to know, do we know why they're bringing that ground in and building that road up so high up there? Every day, almost every day, there's dump load after dump load of ground coming in and they're building the road up real high. Now, there's nothing else going on in the site. Our Clean Harbor, it looks like they moved out. Minuteman isn't dumping, but they're continuing to build this road up. Why, does anybody know where that's coming from or why they're building that road up so high?
I don't.
Is there a permit?
Well, I don't know if they're building, they're not building anything. When you talk about building a road, what road? They've already built the road.
They're building, they're dumping ground and there's a front loader there banking it up and it's getting higher and higher and they're going all the way around. They're going in there by John Street, there by the Ford Motors and going back. They're building the road up high.
You mean the bank up high?
We're dumping a lot of fill.
Fill, just moving fill around.
They're filling in a lot, about four foot high.
Okay.
I don't know where it's coming from, but it's all different colors and it's, I don't know where it's coming from, but it's, it's, it's coming.
So did they have a permit to do that land disturbing?
Mike, is there a permit required?
No, it's, it's open space. They're not doing anything constructive, other than filling in. Originally, when they, when Moran first put that in, that road that they were constructing was a part of the plan initially from the get-go. That was presented in planning, the whole nine yards. That was when the initial complaint came from the fifth ward group about all the traffic on Julius Street. They come up with a plan to get the traffic off Julius Street and that part of that plan was that road, which is a porous material, which is really-
You know what they're putting in there then?
Yeah, they have, I've been in, I've been in contact with Mr. Strom and they have wavebills. I have never seen a wavehill, although Mr. Strom tells me he has wavebills.
So we know where that fill's coming from? We know where that fill's coming from then? We know what, if it's clean stuff?
Other than a quarry, that's all I can tell you.
It's not a road, it's a whole lot.
They don't need stormwater plant when they're changing the drainage or it's 20,000 square feet?
It's a porous material that they're-
They're not changing any drainage.
Right.
Same amount of area.
Not changing any drainage, but they-
Same amount of area. They're not expanding anything.
They're just filling in the whole lot.
Actually, Sunbury's code does say that before any grading can be done, permit is required, and that's on my list. Also, the stormwater management plan that's being discussed here, I don't know if, how many people are aware, but DEP has required Norfolk Southern now, they have filed an application. It has numerous deficiencies and I have filed with DEP deficiencies of that permit, but a stormwater management plan is required. It is required by the City of Sunbury because of the square footage, not open space, but because of the square footage. If you examine your code, you'll find, number one, they haven't gotten a stormwater management plan permit, they haven't even applied for a permit. Number two, no permit's been issued. Number three, according to Sunbury zoning, present zoning, a stormwater management plan maintenance agreement must be in place prior to the time of fill or any activity on the site. No engineering has been done on that. All of those things are required. And those were some of the things that I was referencing in my questions. The subdivision prior to, there's a subdivision up there with Norfolk Central. You had Minuteman on site, you had Clean Harbors on site, and a subdivision plan, according to Sunbury zoning, must be filed prior to allowing those people to commence any activity and they've been having activity for several years now, so none of those things have been done. I don't think there are owners of it. It is not required of owners. Mr. Moran is who would have been responsible. But I also don't think they're there anymore. Who? Those people that you just mentioned. Clean Harbors has withdrawn their permit as a- And Minuteman hasn't been around in, they have a building up in Montan in that, right? Minuteman, yes. But my point is, all of those entities have operated on the site without the proper permitting. Zoning hasn't been enforced, no permits have been issued, which all those required. Now you have illegal fill and grading going on. Again, no permits have been applied for, the city has not issued any permits. That is all illegal activity, all of those things.
When Clean Harbor found out they couldn't get their permit, that's when they picked up, correct?
They would do it, they'd do it.
Beg your pardon? When Clean Harbor found out that Moran lied to them about having their correct permits and when they tried to get it and couldn't get the correct permits, that's when Clean
about the site, uh, Clean Harbors did intend to put evaporation pits on that site and evaporate VOCs into the air, and those of you who doubt that, I have a letter. Beg your pardon?
You know that now, they never applied, well, let's do it this way, we're gonna address your concerns, I don't agree with them, so, and you, you, you know, everybody has their opinion, you have your opinion, the property, like Clean Harbor went into an existing building, nothing would, there'd be no reason for any subdivision, never changed anything, Buttercrust Bakery was now, Bit Boos is in the other building, that was fixed up, this is just another part of it, I don't believe they need a, another stormwater management thing, but we'll definitely check what you say here tonight in record, and, or get your list again to us so we can get it to, to, to Joe if he didn't have it, and then we'll, we'll go and get your interest for the next meeting.
I actually have the permits with me, that D E P is requiring them, and the permit they've applied.
Sure, this is all new stuff, that's what I'm saying, so if D E P's giving them permits, that's their access, but what they're doing to City of Sunbury, City of Sunbury also requires that.
Anything twenty thousand, anything over ten thousand square feet, and they're remodeling twenty thousand square feet, so they, they should have it, but we haven't been requiring things that people.
John, do you review that and see what, what we call for?
Why, can I take a look at council?
All right, appreciate that, ma'am.
Thank you, Jim.
Next meeting.
To answer your questions to how I know that, I'm referring to a letter of January eleven, two thousand thirteen from the City of Sunbury, and in the letter, I'll quote, it says, "In the December eleven, two thousand twelve meeting, a question was asked, what the position of zoning officer would be on a stabilization and oily water sensor separator unit with a caustic scrubber system being installed," that is what I'm referencing, and that is what that is, and is what that does.
And that is exactly what councilman Truitt said they couldn't get because of our zoning, so that was never an issue.
They couldn't get it, but that was their intent.
Their intent, it is two different things, and that's why they're not here no more, because they were not gonna get that as long as I said, for the council.
I am glad to hear that, they couldn't get it, anybody, because that's their.
Because none of us up here wanted that, and when they found out they couldn't get it, that's when they picked up, moved, and that came into this, ma'am.
But, but we asked repeatedly here in council, was that, what was going to go on here, what was their.
They had a meeting, so anybody was here at that meeting with Clean Harbor first came in, and I'd be, be here and have all the permitting guys, and I think a lot of these people said in that meeting that day, they told us exactly what they wanted to do, I mean, they had, they had some kind of big tub they wanted, clean fill, clean oil containers, and all that, so that's when it all went downhill after that, when we said, hey, you know, we don't want this to go down and blow up.
And had they applied for that, you would have known that.
Yes, and they.
Because that's what we said here, every meeting, every application, every put-in we told you about.
I think Moran misled him, said it was gonna be okay to do it, and it didn't come.
I believe so, sir.
They're gone, so, they're out here, so that's not even a worry.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Identify yourself, please.
Light of trophies.
Please identify yourself, please.
Gordon Lamb.
Okay, what's your question?
Could I get a copy of the list of light of trophies that you currently have?
Yep, not, not right now, but.
Yeah, can I get, if you have the, the clock's up, it'll be tomorrow?
Well, Terry's not in, her father passed away, I would say, come to meeting next week, we'll get it for you.
Okay, I'll, next week, that's fine, thank you.
You're welcome. Yes, sir?
Dean Marshall, uh, has, has anyone in any department on the city council initiated any kind of studies as to what kind of fill is being put on the site? I, I don't know what that implies, because where I live, the, last, uh, hydraulic leper well that had, that was reclaimed, uh, found out that tons and tons of the rock that sat under the leaky line for three years is now on the mountain right behind my house, they've got a lot of this material that they're trying to get rid of, and, and if, if city council doesn't know what is being put in the city by truckload after truckload, that seems like they ought to find out.
What's up, Mike, can you say they have wavebills?
Yes, well, I talked to Mr. Strohman, he said he'd have wavebills.
So we can get, get those wavebills, and you know where it's coming from.
They should be, they should be examined.
Mike, can you get those this week, try to call them and see if we can get those[1759.83]